Good evening and welcome to the Mooresville Grade School District Board of Education School Board meeting here in Town Hall at 6:00 PM. At this time, I would like to have a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, we need to, I guess, move to administration of the oath of office.
Pledge first.
Ooh, yeah. Pledge of allegiance.
At this time, I'd like to call Naraya McKee. She's going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you.
She's just getting out of practice, so she'll be...
Okay. Oh. Yep.
We'll defer. We'll wait till she comes.
Okay.
Okay, we'll go ahead.
I'm gonna try long a bit.
Okay.
All right.
You coming?
Oh wait, did she see her?
All right.
Yay! Naraya, just stand up here.
Perfect time.
So Naraya's gonna lead us in the pledge of allegiance as soon as she walks in, right? All right, whenever you're ready, we're ready.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Administration of the oath of office for, looks like myself and Mr. Brawley. This time, I'd like to ask the Honorable Troy J. Stafford to attend the front up here. And he is the Superior Court Judge here in this district and a wonderful role model for the legal community and anybody in this room. Just a joy to know. And I appreciate and am honored that he is a part of this evening.
Thank you very much. Honored and pleased to be here. The two incoming members, attorney member and secretary of state. Do you want to do them separately or together?
We'll do separate down there.
All right. Bro, do you want to stand? Do you have a Bible in front of you?
Yeah.
All right, your wife, come on up.
Why don't you go down there?
Yep.
I, Mr. Brawley, take the left hand of the Bible and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Rakim J. Brawley, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof and that I will endeavor to support, maintain and defend the Constitution of said state not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States. To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God, I, Rakim J. Brawley, do swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of Trustees of the Mooresville Board of Education, according to the best of my skill and ability, according to law, so help me God.
Where is she?
Yep, thank you.
Raise your left hand of the Bible, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Greg Whitfield, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and be faithful and bear true allegiance to the State of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof and that I will endeavor to support, maintain and defend the Constitution of said state not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States. To the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God. I, Greg Whitfield, do swear that I will well and truly execute the duties of the Office of Trustees of the Mooresville Board of Education, according to the best of my skill and ability and according to law, so help me God.
Okey-dokey. It is now time on the agenda to elect the Chairperson of the Board of Education.
All right. Members of the Board, the next item on our agenda is to elect a Chair of the Board of Education for the upcoming year. At this time, I'll entertain nominations for Board Chair.
I nominate Greg Whitfield to continue his service as Chair of this board.
I second.
All right, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of Greg Whitfield as Board Chair, please respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Whitfield, on your election as Board Chair.
Thank you.
Honored to serve again. Looking forward to it.
All right, the next item on our agenda is to elect a Vice Chair. At this time, I will entertain nominations for Vice Chair.
I nominate Rakim Brawley as Vice Chair of the Mooresville Grade School District Board of Education.
Any other nominations? Oh, we didn't have a second, I apologize.
Second.
All right, any other nominations?
I nominate Debbie Marsh.
All right, we have a second nomination. Do we have a second for that? All right, are there any other nominations? So we've had two nominations, one without a second. Do we have another nomination? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of Rakim Brawley as Board Vice Chair, please respond by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, congratulations, Rakim Brawley, on your election as Board Vice Chair. All right, at this time, I will turn the meeting back over to our Board Chair, Mr. Whitfield.
Thank you, sir. Congratulations, Mr. Brawley.
Thank you.
Approval of the agenda.
Before we approve the agenda, I would like to ask for consideration for a movement of one item. I would request that we move item 17C, which is the Shared Use of Facilities MOU with the town, from an item for information to 18D, which would be an item for approval. We would like to have that in place before the start of next year, so that's why we would like to move that from information to approval.
We have a recommendation to amend the agenda. Do I hear a second?
A second.
And that is to, you'll restate that, Mr. Superintendent.
Yep, the amended, so the agenda as presented with the exception of moving item 17C to 18D.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, you'll need a motion. I think anybody made a motion to approve that just yet.
I make the motion to approve the amended agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes of the November 3rd Board meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion to approve. I hear a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. All right, even though we just got into this meeting, I'm letting you know that the next board meeting will be January the 6th here in Town Hall at 6:00 PM. So please be duly noted and aware of that. Student of the Month, Dr. Gardner.
Yes, sir. All right, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we have the honor of recognizing our Student of the Month and pledge leader tonight, Naraya McKee, student at Mooresville High School. Naraya was selected by the Mooresville High School Administrative Team. I'm going to share a little bit about why they selected her, but first, we want to ask her to come up front at this time. Let's give her a round of applause. Naraya McKee began her ninth grade year strong, and throughout her time at Mooresville High School, she has continued to grow in remarkable ways. Although she's faced challenges and worked through adversity early on, Naraya's transformation has been inspiring. She now leads with confidence, compassion, and maturity. As a student leader, Naraya helps guide campus tours and serves as a positive role model for both her peers and students who follow behind her. Athletically, she excels as both a standout player in flag football, as well as the captain of the girls varsity basketball team. Her dedication, resilience, and commitment to excellence shines both on and off the court. Naraya consistently upholds the core values of Mooresville High School with grace and integrity. She has become a true beacon of positivity on our campus, and we are proud to recognize her as this month's Student of the Month. Please join me in congratulating Naraya as our Student of the Month for December.
Naraya, the Mooresville Grade School District Board of Education recognizes Naraya McKee as the Student of the Month for leading the Pledge of Allegiance on this day, December 3rd, 2025.
All right, next we have our Artist of the Month. Tonight, we have the honor of recognizing Ava DeRae, student at Mooresville High School as our Artist of the Month. Ava was nominated by the Fine Arts Team at Mooresville High School, and before I share a little bit about her, I'd like to ask her to come up front at this time. Ava has demonstrated consistent excellence in every fine arts discipline. She's a strong, accomplished member of the band, she's a solid actress and takes leadership roles. In the play Night Witches for NCTC, Ava researched the style of Soviet music that fit the time period of the show. She wrote, arranged, and taught the music to other members of the class just to enhance the play. Though she's currently not in chorus this semester, she will be in the spring, she asked if she could audition for the Mars Hill Choral Festival. She auditioned and was one of three students from Mooresville High School recognized with this honor, and that event will be held in February at their campus. Ava was also instrumental in starting and organizing the Tri-M Music Honor Society for students who want to do more in the arts and build their skills. Ava is Vice President, and she has been amazing at creating spreadsheets, keeping track of who's joined, and she helps with the choral selection, choosing music, teaching parts, overall taking a strong leadership role. She is actively looking for places to perform and plans to share her love of music not only with the community, but also with younger students here in the district to help encourage them to continue studying music when they get to high school. Please join me in congratulating Ava as our December Artist of the Month.
Ava, the Mooresville Grade School District Board of Education recognizes you, Ava DeRae, Artist of the Month, December 3rd.
All right, next up, we have our ABCD Award. Each month, we have the honor of recognizing a district employee who goes above and beyond demonstrating a core value of our district. This month, we will recognize Ms. Sandy Verley, Financial Data Manager at Mooresville High School. Ms. Verley was nominated by the Mooresville High School Administrative Team, and before I share a little bit about why they nominated her, I'd like to ask her to come up front at this time. Let's give her a round of applause. Ms. Verley was selected for this award because of her work demonstrating the core values of authentic relationships and integrity in her day-to-day work. Ms. Verley is a key asset to the Mooresville High School team. She consistently goes above and beyond for our staff and students every day. Her efforts are crucial, ranging from ensuring that all of our classes are covered every day to keeping our school finances in order. Ms. Verley also genuinely loves having conversations with staff members, ensuring everyone in the building feels supported and checked in on. Mooresville High School is truly blessed to have Ms. Verley as part of the team. Please join me in congratulating Ms. Verley as our December ABCD Award winner.
The Mooresville Grade School District recognizes Sandy Verley for going above and beyond the call of duty December 3rd.
All right, next we have several athletic teams that we're going to recognize as part of our Spotlight on People, and we are going to start with our Mooresville High School Women's JV Volleyball Team co-conference champions. So if you're a member of Mooresville High School's JV Volleyball Team, I'll ask you to come up front at this time. Let's give them a round of applause. All right, the Mooresville JV Volleyball Team has proudly earned the title of co-conference champions. This exceptional achievement is the culmination of a fantastic season marked by hard work, dedication, and incredible teamwork. The Blue Devils executed strategic plays, showcased dominant defense, and displayed relentless competitive spirit throughout their challenging conference schedule. Congratulations to every player and the coaching staff on this well-deserved championship title. Mooresville is proud of your success. Please join me in congratulating the Mooresville High School Women's JV Volleyball Team.
Short girl problems.
All right, next up for our Spotlight on People, we will invite the Women's Varsity Volleyball Team, who is also co-conference champions. Invite them up front at this time. Let's give them a round of applause. All right, the Mooresville Women's Varsity Volleyball Team finished the '25-'26 season with a 20-7 record and a North Piedmont Conference regular season championship. They also made it to the fourth round of the 7A State Playoffs, the furthest that the program has made it in over 20 years. On this team, several of our players earned recognition for their achievements as well. We had six all-conference selections, including Offensive Player of the Year, GLO, and Defensive Player of the Year, Reagan Young, along with three first-team all-conference picks. A few of the athletes on the team as well led the conference in major stat categories, including Kelsey Fliss, who finished second in the entire state in total blocks. Gia was also selected to the all-region team, a national award given by AVCA, and she was also selected to represent Mooresville in the NCVBA All-Star Game on December 6. We're incredibly proud of everything this team accomplished, but even more proud of the growth we saw in the team. Thank you to our school and the Mooresville community for the consistent support. We are looking forward to building on this season of success. Let's give the Mooresville High School volleyball team another round of applause. All right, next up, we're going to recognize the Men's JV Soccer Team, who was also conference champions, so I'd like to ask them to come up front at this time. Let's give them a round of applause. Tonight, we are proud to recognize the Mooresville High School JV Boys Soccer Team as conference champions. Overall, the team's record was 12-6-2, but the most important numbers were 7-1-1. That record helped them earn the North Piedmont Conference crown as champions, an accomplishment that has not happened for the high school in the last 10 years. This team showed determination, passion, compassion, caring, and most of all, heart this season. They understood what it takes to not give up and to set goals and accomplish them. On Fridays, when they didn't usually have a regular practice, you could find them in the weight room, determined to be stronger, faster, and smarter. Players kept each other accountable at practice, making sure that they maintained focus, and everyone was committed to achieving the goal. These boys learned a valuable lesson on resilience, determination, and brotherhood. Please join me in congratulating the Mooresville High School Men's JV Soccer Team. All right, at this time, we are going to prepare to transition to our next agenda item, which will be our school highlight with Mooresville High School.
Good evening, Dr. Gardner, Chairman Whitfield, and members of the board. We come before you tonight. My name is Simone Graham. I am the proud principal of Mooresville High School, and how can't I be with such awesome students? As you can see, we have a group of amazing students at Mooresville High School and staff. If we can give them a round of applause just for my school. I also represent an awesome, amazing administrative team. We do a great job of making sure that our students, once they cross the stage of Mooresville High School, we're not done with them. We want to make sure that they go into, whether it's enrollment, into a four-year or two-year college, employment, into the workforce, or into enlistment in the military. So we work really hard, along with our counselors, to make sure that we ensure that we're preparing students for the future and to make sure that they're well-prepared when they walk across that stage. Last year, we decided that we were going to do something to help in the field of education. As you all know, in North Carolina, we have a lot of vacancies in that area of teachers. Mental health, we can't get enough in that, and we wanted to see what could we do in order to help Mooresville Grade School District and every school district around us. So we put our heads together as a team. We came together with our counselors, a couple CTE teachers, and we went around and see what we could do. We came up with, we're going to start two new courses in that field of education. One of them was teaching as a profession, and the other was counseling mental health. And so we said, let's try it, let's see how it works. So tonight, I brought my teachers and my students here to let you know how that's going for us. I also wanted to highlight a program that I will say, Ms. Karen Martin, you can hear her talk about it today. She's retiring in December, so I want to give her a shout-out, but she has done an excellent program, had an excellent program in our early childhood, and so we've been doing what we are now trying to do, but now we're just taking it to an advanced level. Currently, we have, in the early childhood pathway, 172 students. In our counseling and mental health pathway, we have 155 students, and in teaching and as a profession pathway, we have 28 students. So we are very proud that this is our first year for those two cohorts, and I definitely know that it is going to grow next year because students are already asking, how do I sign up for that? And it's because of the amazing staff members that we have, and I'll let you speak on that. I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Clark.
Hello, I'm Jessica Clark, and I have the amazing privilege of teaching as a profession. I don't know what I did to get so lucky to have these students, but I just need to keep doing it because they are like the highlight of my life. So these are some of my students. I have two classes right now. My first block has 12 students, my third block has 16 students. So there is a GPA requirement to get into my class, you have to have a 2.5 GPA, and that's because we have articulation agreements with colleges across North Carolina. So when they take my class, they can get college credit at Western Carolina University, North Carolina A&amp;T, UNC Wilmington, UNC Greensboro, UNC Charlotte, Meredith College, and I think I'm missing a couple. I think there are nine total. But if they get, if they keep a B in the class, they can get college credit for their education courses, not just general studies. So if you'll go to the next slide. So in TAP 1, we shortened teaching as a profession, and we just call it TAP. In TAP 1, we talk about the advantages and challenges of being a teacher, so that they can go in eyes wide open to what they should expect when they walk into this field, and we are honest about all of the education, how we got to where we are in the public education field. We look at laws and court cases, things like that. We also look at instructional strategies, how to actually be a teacher, strategies that teachers employ in their classrooms. We look at classroom management styles, we look at techniques and classroom management strategies. We talk about differentiation in the classroom and why that's important. We talk about inclusiveness and diversity, all of those things, and we are starting, we just ended TAP 1 curriculum with looking at lesson planning techniques and strategies, and they will pick that up again in TAP 2 and 3. So in the spring, TAP 2 and 3, we have a two-block class, so for second and third block, they'll be with me for the whole time. So on Mondays and Fridays, we'll be in our classrooms, learning our TAP 2 curriculum, and Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, they'll be in a classroom setting across the district. So thank you to all of the principals and assistant principals that have let me come into your schools because that has been amazing, so thank you for that, and for people who have come and spoken to my classes as guest speakers, thank you so much, and I'll be reaching out again next year. Let's do the next one. So we went to the Aspiring Educator Summit at UNC Charlotte in September, and that's where this program, the idea of it was birthed last year. So teachers went there, people in our department, and found out that this was a program that was happening, and so we implemented it. So thank you to those people who went and did that. We have had weekly guest speakers. We had Dr. Gardner today as our final one for the semester. We've done school observations at all grade levels, and in TAP 2 and 3, we'll continue those guest speakers, and they'll have a 120-hour internship in the K-8 school.
Hi, my name is Karen Martin, and this is my 20th year, hard to believe, with Mooresville Grade School District, teaching early childhood education. This course is also a double-block class, so I have students in second and third block each semester, and our focus is more on birth to age eight, so we can go from childcare centers up to third grade. And our main focus is on development, and how do we help children through those domains of development and how children learn best through play? So our focus is a little different than the academic focus once they get to kindergarten, but children in this program are able to spend time with me in the classroom to learn a curriculum, and then they take that curriculum knowledge and information and skills, and they actually apply it in an early learning environment. For our internship, we have two parts. The first part, we visit various preschools and elementary school classrooms in our district, and this gives children the opportunity, or my students, the opportunity to work with children, to see how things change drastically from one year to the next. We currently visit four different local half-day preschool programs, where students spend two days with two different age groups. We visit Rocky River Elementary School, and then we rotate through the pre-K, kindergarten, first, and second grade classroom. So again, students get as broad a perspective as they can on development, from the youngest of the young until our age limit of about age eight. The second part of the internship, students pick one cooperating teacher in class to work with at one of the sites that we have visited, and they usually spend eight to nine weeks, depending on how the semester goes, working four days a week with that classroom, the teacher and the students, and helping students, again, learn and grow. I've been super lucky that several of my former early childhood education student interns are now actually teachers in the district.
Ms. Teeter is actually the teacher of the class, but she could not be here tonight. The kids have really signed up and are loving this class. We have six sections of this right now, and next year, we will also have Counseling and Mental Health, too, so kids can become a completer, have another pathway that they can complete as a CTE completer. And at the end of this, you will also, they also do a PBM, so it's not a state test, they will do a project and show what they have learned, and this is helping our students for those careers in counseling, mental health, social work, which there is a great need for. And Brooklyn is going to, who is in the class, is going to tell you a little bit more about it.
Hi, everyone. So I find the class to be extremely helpful, so not only does it help with your daily life, but it helps with your future, too, as a student. So an example from my daily life was, we learned about empathetic responses, I-statements, which are saying, like, I feel this way, and I'd like to do this, like finding a solution. And so my example was, we learned about primary and secondary emotions, so your primary emotion is like... is like, how you feel, and your secondary emotion is how you express how you feel. So in real life, I had a friend who I distanced myself from, and they felt the need to almost, like, attack me for it. So I explained to them that I understood their primary emotion and why they felt that way, but their secondary emotion was coming off as anger, when that's not really how they wanted to express themselves. And like, believe it or not, but they changed their mindset after that. They were like, okay, I see what you're saying. I didn't mean to come off that way. I see your point of view. Other things, besides empathetic response, I feel like everybody should lead with empathetic mindset, but it teaches us better examples of how to be empathetic and how to put yourself in other people's shoes. I think that's it.
Well, I want to thank the staff and the students for them sharing. As you can tell from the young lady speaking, they are getting a lot of hands-on experience with the classes and learning, and even taking it to their friends and seeing that. And so when they go into the class, like I spoke to a student today in lunch, and she said when she goes into the class, she can now see cues that teachers are doing for transitions that they're learning in some of the classes. But we're not done with trying to get the new classes and trying to build into the future and prepare our students for tomorrow. So I want to bring Kevin Wilson up, and he's going to tell you about a new course coming up at Mooreville High School next year.
Good evening, Chairman Whitfield, Dr. Gardner, School Board. So you can see all the great things that are going on with intentionality. And that's really the focus of this, is intentionality. So we have begun that with a masonry program. We're trying to bring it back to Mooreville High School. So we have met with district leadership. Gates Construction has graciously signed on to partner with us, and North Carolina Masonry Foundation. We have taken students to the Masonry Field Day, which this fall, so we took eighth, eighth through 10th graders, because that's our future, going to be our future cohort. We are intentionally putting it out in social media, so you're going to see it, if you haven't already. There's a post today acknowledging Gates Construction Partnership. But I just, Ms. Graham asked me to speak to this because really the goal is to find those pathways that lead to employment, right? So we have employment, enlistment, and enrollment, sorry. So we're trying to cover all three bases all the time, right? So we're always looking for those programs. You'll hear more about it.
And I want to, it's not time for comments, but I want to jump in. That graphic you guys did, I think I had mentioned it to a couple people here, the graphic you did about the masonry, how clear it was for a child, you know, a high schooler, to really see the end goal of it, was what we need for every single one of our CTE classes, right? Because they get lost in translation. They don't know how they can take this class and what it translates into. But that graphic y'all did for masonry, it laid it out, and it was so easy and so eye-catching. I wish we had one for every single CTE class we took.
And we are working on that. Thank you. And it's appropriate for me to say that Mary Royal does all of those.
Well, it was great. I mean, it was clear. I mean, they could look at it and go, oh, if I take this class, this is where I could be at the very end. So it was very easy, just like the other three classes we've talked about. They understand where they can be at the end. There's no question. So we always haven't done a great job of translating these classes turn into this employment opportunity, but that graphic's amazing.
And I love to see that we're developing programs that are going to enable us to keep our best resources, our kids, our people here in our community. And it took me years to find someone who would redo my brick steps, because there aren't that many masons out there, and they don't want to do these little jobs. And of course, we know the need that we have for teachers. And it's always fulfilling to me to see our students come back and want to teach in our district. And now we're growing our own, and I'm excited to see how many more come back.
And understanding that you can get community college and college credit for those classes. Sometimes full CCP classes are intimidating for our students, so if they've got an in-house right there, they're more willing to take that up a chance and get that credit, and it's worth a ton.
Well, thank you so much. And we do want to give a shout out to our community partners. We could not do this without community partners allowing our students to go out and intern, come in. We have career fairs. I will tell every parent and guardian, there is nothing at Mooreville High School that we will not stop at to make sure that your child is successful once they graduate from Mooreville High School. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I would like to say to Ms. Graham that that excitement from those students and the demonstrated learning opportunities is, that's all you need to see. Our future's strong here. And the masonry program, that's just with Gates Leadership and, oh, I'm just, I'm overwhelmed. Thank you, thank you. Okay, we are now at the point of staff reports. Dr. Gardner.
Thank you, sir. We will start staff reports with Mr. Ribbick, giving an update on maximizing opportunity and achievement.
Thank you. Chairman Whitfield, board members, Dr. Gardner, have some exciting updates to share. So first, on November 10th, a team from Mooreville Graded, which included CTE, Curriculum Instruction, and Technology, went to visit a North Carolina Spark classroom in a neighboring district. It was exciting to see students engaged in learning based on their interests and learning at their own pace. The goal of this program is to develop student interest in technology-related careers. We are currently planning to bring a Spark Lab to Mooreville Graded, and we will keep you updated on our progress. And we just found out yesterday, very exciting, we are receiving a $10,000 grant to start building up the lab. And we thank Dr. Wade for working on that. So we're very excited to get that started up. Mooreville Graded is part of the Skills for the Future Pilot Program, which focuses on building durable skills in our ninth through 12th grade students, aligned to the portrait of a graduate. Our team has participated in professional development centered on unpacking and aligning ninth through 12th grade lessons with opportunities for student collaboration. Teachers are currently collecting and submitting artifacts, demonstrating students' ability to collaborate to solve problems. Our hope is that this pilot will lead to changes in how our state assesses our students. We held our first multi-tiered system of support meeting with members of EC and Curriculum Instruction Departments on November 17th. This team will focus on meeting the needs of students who require additional support in behavior and academics. Our initial focus area will be supporting our teachers with effective behavior strategies in the classroom. On November 18th, we held a middle school dual immersion information meeting for families interested in having their children continue Spanish-speaking opportunities in the middle schools. Students will have the opportunity to take a daily Spanish elective to continue their acquisition of the Spanish language. They will also have opportunities to use Spanish during their intervention and remediation block. Families were asked to provide feedback, which will be used for future planning. We have special thanks to Dr. Wade for planning and leading this session, and to Ms. Conley for her planning and support. We held our second MOA committee meeting on November 18th, where the team continued developing and implementing plans in three key areas. One is implementing effective data-driven interventions, remediation, and enrichment blocks across all of our schools. Two is reviewing grading practices, and three, enhancing our innovative schools model. Teams will continue to implement these strategic plans throughout the year. Data meetings have been conducted with the elementary and high school leadership teams. School teams were able to share their first-quarter data report celebrations and opportunities for improvement. District and school leadership then collaborated on next steps for improvement based on this data. Special thanks to Ms. Conley and Dr. Wade for coordinating these meetings. And finally, and I can't believe we're already talking about this, but kindergarten registration for next year will be on Monday, January 12th, from 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock at Parkview Elementary School. But we're also going to have a K-5 STEM events held on that evening, and kindergarten activities for our future students. Parents are reminded to bring their registration materials, which can all be found on our district website. So those are our updates, and now, are there any questions?
You said that there will be, you're looking at daily Spanish electives for the middle school, for the DI students. Would that run year-long?
Yes. Yep, that will be year-long. Yeah, we're excited to continue to have the Spanish opportunities for our dual-emergent students as they move on.
And were the initial responses from parents favorable?
They were favorable, yes. We wanted to be sure that they were aware, and we also asked for their feedback during that meeting. All the parents got a chance to tell us some other opportunities they may think their children may be interested in, so maybe some clubs or other areas that they'll be able to participate in.
It makes sense, once you get to that level, that...
And it's more focused, so the dual immersion part is more focused on the, you know, the curriculum, the vocabulary. But the middle school is going to be more focused on conversational and learning about the culture.
So that... Probably getting a little bit ahead. Or I'd just like to see some more information about how that looks with sixth, seventh grade, and then which youth, eighth, of course, we offer Spanish. But we're not there yet, because that first cohort will just be in the sixth.
Sixth grade. But we have a plan through that route. And then even starting in high school, we're starting to look at, what will it look like when they go to high school?
Okay, great, okay.
We want to be sure those students continue on.
Yep, absolutely.
And then both of the kindergarten registration and the park, the K-5 event, the curriculum night, is both, they're both at Parkview, correct?
That is correct. On January 12th, from 5:00 to 7:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Safe, Happy, and Healthy with Dr. Albert and Dr. Rowe.
Good evening, Mr. Whitfield, Dr. Gardner, members of the board. I'll start our report this evening for our Safe, Happy, and Healthy goal, with a few athletic updates from our secondary schools. As you know, we honored three of our conference championship teams from the fall for Mooreville High School here this evening. In addition to these teams, we will be honoring the varsity football team next month for also winning the conference championship and advancing to the third round of the state playoffs. In discussing that with Ms. Graham and Mr. Bustle, we figured that the town hall could only hold a certain number of athletes and coaches. So we agreed that we'll honor the football team in January. At Mooreville High School, we would also like to congratulate Coach Susie Hudson. You saw her this evening. She was named the North Carolina Soccer Coaches Association 7A Assistant Men's Soccer Coach of the Year. As many of you know, Coach Kitka suffered an injury and was out most of the season, so Coach Hudson stepped up. She's a valuable member of our coaching staff and our teaching staff at Mooreville High School. So congratulations to Coach Hudson. Our winter sports seasons are well underway at both our middle schools and Mooreville High School. Our middle school, a couple highlights from our middle schools. Our middle school, Mooreville Middle School Varsity Basketball Team is undefeated for the girls right now. Selma Burke, congratulations to our Selma Burke cheerleading team, who won the NCAA-NDA Regional Championship last month. And also at our high school level, again, off to a great start for our winter athletic programs. Our men's varsity basketball team is currently 4-1. Swimming has had a few meets, and the girls came home victorious in a conference try meet. And the competition cheer, they were supposed to participate in the state competition this coming weekend, but due to a fire at the venue, that event has been postponed. So our cheerleaders at the high school are getting ready for Nationals in February. Onto some Safe, Happy, and Healthy updates. Mooreville Graded has a new K-9, continuing our partnership with the Mooreville Police Department. We'd like to welcome Duke to our team, as Bella, I knew that that was coming. I actually knew that, I'm sorry.
Go Bears!
But Duke is joining Officer Spearman. They will be partners. As you may have known, or if not, Officer Walther and Bella will be retiring after the spring semester. So again, we're excited to have this partnership continue with Mooreville Police Department. Mr. Neal and I, our Director of Maintenance, we have met with all of our principals and directors in the district to hear their capital outlay requests for the 2026-2027 school year. We're finalizing this list with cost estimates for each project, and then Mr. Neal and myself will meet with Ms. Davis and Dr. Gardner to review that list before we present those items to the school board in the January work session. And lastly, for me, my monthly stop-arm violation updates. Last year, on November 12th, we had approximately 150 violations of stop-arm, you know, running the stop-arm on our school buses. As of November 12th this year, so the same date, we had 268. So again, in 2024, we were at 150 violations. And at the same time, in 2025, we're at 268. Right now, I met with Mr. Farmer this morning, we're in the ballpark of 300 violations at this time. So again, we plead every month, we put out PSAs. But again, folks, when you see the stop-arm out, those red lights are flashing for a reason. We plead with you to stop for those stop-school buses.
Are there places where it seems to be happening more often, where we could ask law enforcement to be there?
So I asked Mr. Farmer that. There are some hot areas, and the partnership that we have with Officer Dingler and Mooreville Police Department, they are doing that with us, but it's not consistently the same. You know, at times, it'll be one certain road or one certain neighborhood. So they do, they heighten their availability there, their awareness, but it's still continuing.
I saw a video, and it was in another state, where bus drivers were doing their stops in a way where they made it virtually impossible for a car to come around them.
Right.
I don't know if that's best practice, but, you know...
It seems like an easy solution to just stop.
I do have a request, maybe we could start tracking. I'd like to look at, I would like, and I don't know how possible it is, I would like for somebody to start noticing how many questionable violations or things that are happening around the high school crosswalks, when our crossing guard is trying to stop traffic. I'd like for us to look at how many times a day she feels like somebody doesn't want to follow her instructions.
It's interesting you bring that up. Ms. Graham and I were talking about that this morning, or this afternoon.
I've seen a couple in the past few days where people don't want to watch her and listen to her, where those kids are trying to cross the crosswalks. I want to start looking at that number. I want to start having a serious discussion about some of that.
Noted.
Have you, do you know what the bus arm violations, are they mainly in the morning or the afternoon, or is it even?
It's both. It's both. I can get a concrete number, but I get a notification in my email every single time it happens. And I would say, just an initial reaction is, there's probably more in the morning, but it's not far off in the afternoon.
Did you notice in the conversation where there are a lot that were happening near the high school crossing crosswalk?
The school stop-arm violations?
No, no, no. I'm talking about just the crossing guard.
Oh, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. Yeah, there's some folks, Ms. Graham actually had a, we'll say, a conversation with a civilian who was not necessarily yielding. So, yes, that is definitely a concern.
Have you had discussion with the police department with regard to why they're unable to enforce? It's my understanding in talking to some of them that it's an identification issue. It's not a matter of identifying the car. The license plate is identifying the actual driver with enough certainty to criminally prosecute him.
So Mr. Farmer's had quite a few conversations with Officer Dingler. He's the, kind of our lead contact with the police department. And so we've also got legal involved with some of that as far as advice. But we're very fortunate that we do have the camera systems on the bus, both internally and externally, that when that button is pressed, our drivers have been doing a good job with that, so that we can capture that evidence that we need. But to your point, that's probably part of the reason why there's a delay right now. But yes, we've had those conversations. And again, we're providing all the evidence that we have at our fingertips to those folks who need it.
Have we addressed any of this with local representatives? This seems to be a state issue, not just...
A town of Mooreville Police Department issue.
Well, one of the things that the state passed, and I believe 2017, is that you are allowed to pursue civil charges against a stop-arm violation, and then the burden of proof is not as intense. So the positive identification isn't necessarily needed. You don't need to see the face of the driver and be able to identify them. So we've had conversations with the county around that, and their attorney. Actually, Mr. Shatley and I talked today or yesterday via email, and so he's following up with them. That isn't necessarily going to solve the problem, but it is a quicker way to provide a consequence to those folks that are doing it. Because right now, it's learned behavior, that people are doing it, nothing's happening, so they continue to do it, so.
And I'll say, Mr. Farmer's reiterated that we have the support of Mooreville Police Department, and we have a good partnership with them in this endeavor, so.
So the county has to be the one to enforce it?
They have to pass the ordinance. So the county, once the county passes an ordinance saying that we can pursue civil charges, then we can work through that. Which myself and Dr. James presented to the county last year around that. They are definitely interested in it. We are just going to be one of the first districts in North Carolina to do it. So they're working through legal channels and things like that. I believe there's one, maybe two districts in North Carolina that are presently doing this, so we'll be an early adopter.
I mean, between us and ISS, it's that we have a lot of kids that are in danger. And we do not want to get to the point where someone has to die for something to happen. and we do not want to get to the point where someone has to die for something to happen.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
It just seems to me if identification is an issue, you know whose car it is, I would assume that they would know who has their car. So you either hold the owner of the car responsible, or they turn in who was driving that car.
Right.
Yeah, it's...
So my understanding is you can do that with a civil, pursuing civil charges, but I guess I would defer to Mr. Whitfield if he wants to elaborate on that, but crim, you know, as criminal charge, the burden of proof is higher.
Beyond a reasonable doubt, you have to identify, you have to identify the driver and the action as being criminal with a civil matter. You just have to show by greater weight of the evidence, you know, and that's a lot easier. You gotta, plus like you said, you got a driver's license or a registration, and you have some identification of the driver, and that's sufficient enough to meet the burden. But even though we've got cameras, those cameras are still, it's difficult to get particulars enough to be beyond a reasonable doubt as to who that driver is on a lot of occasions. Not all, but a lot of occasions, right?
So there's no way you can connect the license plate with a, pretty much a constitutional, a constitutional fee as far as like with the ticket or anything? Because it's almost similar to like tolls and a speeding ticket that like they have trap zones where they get your...
Well, the problem is, and they, and they ran into the same thing with regard to that, like in Charlotte 20 years ago when they started doing that, is identifying the driver in a criminal or traffic case as opposed to a civil matter, is identifying the driver beyond a reasonable doubt. And that's where, that's where the problem comes from, law enforcement to be able to show that portion, even though it might be that driver. That driver's never gonna, well, not never, but unlikely to ever admit to a criminal act like that, knowing what the repercussions are. And therefore, you're never, you're gonna be very, it's gonna be very difficult to get them to admit, oh yeah, it was me that was driving, I'm sorry, I ran that, that red light on that, on that stop, stop sign on that bus. You know, it's so practically speaking, it doesn't work that way. Theoretically, you would hope that people would be responsible, but they're not.
Because if a car is registered to me and I get a ticket for $250 three or four times, I'm gonna make sure that, you know, that's taken care of. But also, it's most importantly, you're gonna start stopping for the stop arm, so.
Just start sharing a picture of it every day on there.
Well, hopefully the civil, the civil part will be one of those things that we can maybe start enforcing that. And there's, there are possibilities that repeat vehicles that have, you know, could ramp up their fine each time they get, you know, it could be $200 first time, $400 the next, you know, $800 the next, and at some point in time, somebody's gonna go...
Yeah, cut it off.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's start posting pictures.
What, what is the, what is, is there a fee or a fee associated with this?
As of right now, I don't think anything's been determined as far as the penalty.
Gotcha.
I think bottom line is, if you're listening or you're here in person, tell your friends and everyone you know, if you are running the stop arm, we are looking at ways to get you.
We're gonna put it on Mooresville, Mom.
Because these kids, these kids need to be safe, and this is just ridiculous.
I think a firewall probably...
It's a safety issue.
And I will say, Mr. Farmer, Dr. Royal have been relentless in working with the county, working with Mooresville Police Department, doing whatever we can. I know that Mr. Farmer presently is spending a lot of his time processing paperwork related to this.
Downloading video.
He does not set anything to the side. If somebody runs stop arm, he's doing all the steps, which is consuming a lot of his time.
Right, we're doing what we're supposed to do. We need everybody else to help us out.
Yep, because when you think...
Shame on our community if we wait until there's a tragedy.
Because when you think about it, if it does happen, it's gonna come back on us. You know, I get it that the driver's gonna be responsible, but they're gonna look at Mooresville Graded School District for what, the actual incident that happened. You know, what do we do? How do we work with the PD or whoever it need to be? And even though we are doing what we're supposed to do at this point, it's still one of those things to where I feel like we can do more.
Before I hand it over to Dr. Albert, I would like to say, I'm not sure if she's watching, but as you know, my partner, Board Meetings, is not here this evening. So keep Ms. Atwell in your prayers and wishes she's, from a health-wise, not doing well. So if she's watching, hey Grandma, we miss you.
Grandma.
Good evening, Dr. Gardner, Mr. Whitfield, members of the board. I will continue with our Safe, Happy and Healthy updates. We held our committee meeting yesterday, and the team's insightful focus is on these key areas. Refining clear and consistent expectations for classroom and office managed behaviors, which will then be used to identify professional development for all staff. Collecting and sharing effective practices for fostering positive staff and student environments across all schools and departments. And strengthening attendance, interventions and protocols. We are also in the process of finalizing our EC child count submission, which is currently projected at 824 students. All students included in this count must have an active IEP as of December 1st. And for context, last year at this time, we had 819 students, so fairly consistent. And finally, I am excited to share that our EC department is fully staffed, and they have completed additional professional development since last summer's EC boot camp. Training and, training topics included so far have been on high leverage practices, instructional strategies for learning disabilities and autism, adapting instruction for preschoolers, effective IDEA evaluation and identification, and de-escalation strategies, all designed to improve outcomes for students with disabilities. And at this time, that concludes my part of the report. Any questions for me?
Nah, not so much a question, but it's a blessing to have our EC department fully staffed. So that's a huge blessing, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up we have Recruit, Grow, Entertain with Ms. Kunamis Davis.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Gardner, members of the Board of Education. Ms. Davis and I are gonna be a little shorter with our comments. So for HR, our busiest event season comes up in the spring, and so we are right now doing a lot of planning. We have some events that we are finalizing. And one of those that we will start off in January will be a mid-year orientation for teachers. We are working on one, a plan for a mid-year orientation for employees who were hired after our summer event. And so our mid-year one for teachers is set for January 5th, as soon as we return from break. And we continue to look for ways to, you know, leverage opportunities to engage our staff. And so several leadership leaders will be engaged in that event, and will share information about Mooresville Graded Schools as they did in, at NEO in the summer. This week, our teachers and certified staff who completed their National Board Certification process will receive notices. I think the day, notification day is December 6th, and so we will be able to share more with you in January or February about those teachers' accomplishments. So we look forward to that. And I think that is, that's all I have for my comments this evening. Do you have any questions?
Thank you. Mr. Whitfield, Dr. Gardner, and members of the board, from the finance perspective, although we are now in the month of December, we continue to receive allotments from the state and federal governments. We are always happy about receiving money, so we will not complain about that. And these will be presented later in amendments to the budget that was adopted by you all last month. Also, in January, the Finance Department is looking forward to starting back up the monthly Financial Data Manager meetings. So I don't know if you remember, but these monthly meetings provide professional development for our school and department financial data managers in a small targeted setting. So the goal of this professional development is to harness and refine existing skills while diving deeper to develop a broader understanding of the big picture. And this does align with our priority area of growing and retaining talent in Mooresville Graded. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you ladies.
Thank you.
All right, next up we have Culture of Relationships with Ms. McLean.
Good evening, Chairman Whitfield, Dr. Gardner, members of the board. Yesterday, our Panorama Parent Survey went out to the households in our district. Each parent and guardian with an email address on file received a survey for each school that they have a child attending. And while the content we are, we are gathering is the same, we did try to trim it down a bit this year to hopefully get a better response rate. So hopefully the, the, doing that will help with people taking the time to fill it out. It doesn't take any time at all. So we are asking that everyone fill this survey out right now, and it's only been 24 hours. We are at 3.2%, so 263 people have filled it out. And we really need to stress how important it is that this is a chance for our parents and guardians to make their voices heard, whether it's to say, we love that you're doing this, but we think you need to improve here, because that's how we grow and get better as a district. So again, we urge everyone to fit, to fill out the survey. And we will continue to send out reminders. It will be open through the 12th unless we feel like we need to push it further. Also, each year, MGSD leadership holds its Legislative Breakfast. This breakfast is an opportunity for MGSD to collaborate with local and state government officials, as well as amplify both amazing things happening in our schools and the pressing needs we face in public education right here in NC. This year's breakfast will be held next Friday, December 12th, and we look forward to hosting this tradition and discussing ways that we can all work together to support our public schools. Any questions?
Now, if it's not, if it's possible to do, I always think it's good if you can let the people you're surveying know, okay, in the past X number of years, based on suggestions from these surveys, these are actions that the district has taken, or these are things that, you know, we have implemented because of feedback from these surveys. And that might help folks to see that, yes, they are something that we depend on.
It's a great idea. Thank you.
Anybody that's out streaming or watching this to a later date, please, please participate. It's so helpful to our district.
Can you, can you do a QR code and put it up at like sporting events, where they can take it on their cell phone? Is that something that we can possibly do with this?
Well, the, I'm sorry, the, to help also with school data, each parent receives a specific code so that they're filling out based on their knowledge of their child's school. But yeah.
Gotcha, thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, Board members. From our report, the month of December, as you know, provides numerous opportunities to see our students in action, which started yesterday with our annual high school winter band concert. Tomorrow, the high school chorus will join Mooresville Middle School Chorus for a holiday performance. Other performances this month include the Color Guard this Friday, as well as the Selma Burke Dance Team. Next Tuesday, Selma Burke Middle and Mooresville Middle Bands will both hold their holiday concerts at the Performing Arts Center. Then next Thursday and Friday, Selma Burke Middle School's Theater Team will be performing at the Performing Arts Center. And then we'll wrap up the holiday season the third week in December with a variety of activities and performances in our elementary and intermediate schools. December also brings the end of the first semester, so we want to wish all of our high school students best of luck as they wrap up first semester with our end of course exams. And then last but certainly not least, Mr. Bob Gates, longtime local business owner and supporter of public education, was recently recognized at the annual North Carolina School Board Association Conference as their statewide champion of public education. Mr. Gates usually prefers to do his work behind the scenes, doesn't like a lot of recognition, but we were excited to see him receive this recognition at the state level, and we absolutely appreciate all he's done and will continue to do for our students and staff. Thank you, and this concludes my comments.
Thank you, sir. Most of the things that Dr. Gardner shared and Ms. McLean shared with regard to the activities that are coming up in the next month, we already started off or kicked off the festive holiday season last night. Dr. Marsh, myself and Ms. Bender were able to attend the winter concert, and that was absolutely fabulous, as it always seems to be. And there are obviously a lot of other holiday band concerts, chorus concerts in the next several weeks, leading up to the Christmas celebration. I would obviously ask you guys to attend as many of those as you can, because they're so uplifting and exciting to see the joy in the young folks' eyes. Also mentioned by Ms. McLean, we will have our Legislative Breakfast, which is critical for us to make sure that we get the information to our area leaders as to what we are interested in, our priorities, the things that are important to our district, that are helpful to our children in this district, and we want to make sure that we attend that next Friday on the 12th, begins at 9:00 AM at East Mooresville Intermediate. I know that children are early, are excited about the early release for winter break on the 19th, and we, as we suggested or indicated earlier tonight, will have a new board meeting for the new year on January 6th here at the town hall at 6:00 PM. So look forward to seeing everybody enjoying the holiday season and be back here in a month. That concludes the board events. Public comment? No public comment. Items for information, Dr. Gardner?
Yes, sir. We will start with our end of course, end of grade exam retesting information with Mr. Oral and Ms. Riddick.
Good evening, Mr. Whitfield, Dr. Gardner, members of the board. On the eve of fall testing, we are here to give you exciting updates with regard to retesting. As in previous years, students who are not proficient on their EOC or EOG assessments have the opportunity to retest. However, this year, that opportunity is extended to fifth and eighth grade science, biology, and also third grade reading. It is also now available in the fall testing window, which means that our students who are currently taking fall EOCs do not have to wait until the spring to retest like they did last year, which I think is beneficial to those students. English, too, due to the amount of time that it takes to get the scores back, from the time that we get the last score, we have four days to complete that retesting, so that will probably take, take place after break when our students return. The higher the two scores will be used for district and school proficiency and growth, and will also be counted for the student exam grade, which accounts for 20% of their overall grade. Unfortunately, the duration of the testing window was not changed, so that creates a complicated timeframe. But Mrs. Graham and her staff have done an outstanding job of making sure that initial testing, remediation, which is not required by the state, and the retesting will be done within that five-day window that they have at the end of the month, in, along with the CTE and teacher-made exams. However, unlike last year, it has been made clear to us that retesting is an opt-in process, not an opt-out process like it was last year. And for that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Riddick.
Parents and guardians of students who are in our EOC courses this fall have been notified of this opportunity of the retakes, and we are presently working on gaining permission for those students to retest if needed. It is imperative that parents do complete this opt-in form if they want their student to have an opportunity to retest, and we are continuously reminding parents of this, and we will continue to do so, because we want to have as many as possible retest, because it doesn't hurt the student. We take the best grade, we take the best score. It only helps the students, it only helps our schools, and it only helps our district. So any parents that may be listening, please be sure to complete that. If you have a student who's in an EOC course, to please complete the form to opt in to retest in case it's needed for your child. Because the more we have now, we don't have to scramble. Once the assessments have been given, we'll just know ahead of time, and it's easier to plan as well for the schools for how many students will be retesting.
Are these just paper forms that the student then has to turn in?
No, we have it online.
It's electronic?
Yes. Yeah, we want to make it as easy as possible.
Can you, where can they find it at, just pretty much?
It's been...
I know some people streaming always have questions with, you know, websites and different things.
Yeah, it's been sent out to them.
Okay.
And we're gonna continue to do so.
I, I got it on Parents Square.
Yes.
Yeah, gotcha.
And we're gonna continue each day and try to get as many as possible.
Gotcha.
And one of the things I would reinforce that makes this so important is, so we're asking everyone, whether, you know, no matter how you feel like your student's gonna perform, if we know this now, we can really plan. There was a lot of pushback. I know I voiced my concern. When you have a five-day window to give an initial exam, to find out who didn't pass, to get in touch with that family and tell them, you did not pass, you can come back in and test, that is a lot of work. And our high school has taken, you know, they're all in with everything. So they have taken on that challenge, and they want to make sure that every student that wants that opportunity has it. But that, that definitely complicates things, and, which is why we're asking that question now. The sooner that we have that information from each family, then we're ready to execute once we get that data.
So is this opt-in going just to the parents? What if a student wants to retake the test and the parent hasn't filled it out?
Has to come from a parent or guardian. That's the state.
Yeah, we're gonna continue to advocate that our concerns related to that, that was voiced as a concern by several superintendents when this information was shared. But this is the opportunity we've been handed for now, and we'll continue to voice that.
So is there a possibility going forward in second semester that we can send those out like the first day back of second semester? Like, hey, you're taking this class. Hey, you're taking this class in May, you may be able to retest at the end. I mean, can we start then? Because I mean, I know right now, like, forget it, I'm not reading ParentSquare because there's a million messages in there for things to do.
Yeah, we can start letting it know early. Yeah, we can look into that.
Yeah, part of this was, you know, finding this out middle of the semester.
Sure, right, so you don't have any other opportunity, but thinking ahead, like...
Yeah, and hopefully, too, parents will get used to this is the way, hopefully, the state will continue this, and parents will know ahead that's something that they'll just do.
Maybe we can put it in our...
We can.
...forms when we sign up.
Oh, we definitely can do that.
Yeah. That's been a point of discussion for us. We might just build that into our forms. But for this first time, we felt, we were a little worried that if we asked too early, it's like, well, I'll worry about that when it gets there. So we felt like we had to have a time that was somewhat close, but I do think long-term what we'll do is build that into all the questions we ask parents.
Yeah, and if you're handing it to me in January, my child's starting a new class, I'm more likely to read it.
That's a good point.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Ms. McLean, who will be sharing, it is time to already start thinking about this, the 2026-2027 Mooresville graded school calendar.
Good evening again, Chairman Whitfield, Dr. Gardner, and members of the board. So we spent multiple meetings in the month of October, end of October, beginning of November, working on a calendar. Just to remind everyone, there are certain qualifications when you're working on the calendar, such as the amount of holidays that have to be included, annual leave days, et cetera. But our calendar committee is comprised of staff, members, parents, and administrators. Each school was represented by committee members, and the committee, as I said, held three meetings to develop the draft calendar being presented this evening. So some of the considerations that the committee had to look at was the calendar needs 215 total days in the 10-month calendar, and this includes instructional, annual leave, holiday, and workdays, and all of those together must equal 215. Those instructional days are the days students would be in school. There must have at least 10 annual leave days and nine workdays, and two workdays must be optional. This calendar that we are presenting tonight contains 174 instructional days or 1,054.4 instructional hours. The state requires us to have 1,025 instructional hours per year. Any questions about that part? So the proposed calendar that I'm going to show you here in a moment, the start date for staff would be July 29th, 2026. The start date for students would be August 5th, 2026. First semester has 86 days, second semester has 88 days. Fall break and spring break align with Mitchell Community College, and the last day for students would be May 20th, 2027, with the graduation of May 22nd, 2027. Now, I want to point out with this that this would be a graduation a week earlier than Memorial Weekend. Memorial Day falls this year on the last day of the month, and it just made it extremely difficult to make all of it work. So we had some challenges this year with committee. So as you can see from the calendar, we, and just like I said, the teachers would come back with required workdays on the 29th. They would have five at the beginning of the year, and then students would start on the 5th. And of course, we would have the September Labor Day holiday. DPD is district protected, so that would be a required workday, but it's district protected for district PD. Our fall break would be the 12th through the 16th of October, and then we would have a required workday on the 30th of October, and that is something that was requested to help with conferences, et cetera. And then, of course, November always looks pretty similar each year. We have Veterans Day, which is required holiday by the state, and we have the Thanksgiving break. One thing I'm also going to point out, you will notice, is the only early release day we have in this calendar this year is going into that Thanksgiving break with the holiday parade. This was something that teachers and parents all felt like they could do away with that early release going into Christmas, because this year, Christmas starts a little bit later than, you know, that last day we have, so we took that early release, and we will go a full day. Also, the high school thought that would help with some testing. Then in December, we would start Christmas break on Monday, December 21st. That would be an optional workday, and it would go through Monday, January 4th, with students coming back on Tuesday, January 5th, to start second semester. We would, of course, have the Martin Luther King Holiday there in January on the 18th, and then another district-protected PD Day on February 15th. Spring break would run from March 8th through the 12th, and then we would also have, right there around that Easter, the 26th, which is a holiday, and then on the 29th, that Monday after Easter would be an optional workday. We would finish up our workdays on April 19th. That would be a required workday, and we would finish the year on May 20th, with the 21st being required workday, graduation occurring on the 22nd. And then there's two optional workdays for those that feel like they did on the 24th Break and spring breaks would line up.
Thank you.
So if there aren't any more questions, I am happy to answer more. You will, of course, set on this for this month, and then, you know, hopefully vote in January. You are welcome to reach out to me with questions, and any, you know, if you see something that you have a question about, you can reach out to me, and then we'll be back in January and hopefully vote and have our calendar for next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Ms. McLean, I believe you are staying up at the mic since we made the revision to the agenda, and you will have the first item for approval, our cellphone policy.
So last month, we brought you the cellphone policy that was, went along with the NCGA House Bill 959, also known as the Cellphone Bill. At that time, I believe that there was some desire to combine two different aspects of it for upper grades and lower grades, so I worked on a bill that did that. I sent it to NCSBA to make sure it was in line with the law, and that is what you were, you have in your packet. And in that, it has all of the requirements. For grades K-8, it would be a complete ban on electronic device use from the start to the end of the school day. And for grades 9-12, it would be a complete ban on electronic device use during instructional time, but would allow use between classes and during lunch. Are there any questions?
The reasoning for the change for 9th to 12th is a complete ban.
So it's one of the things that we discussed with high school administration as far as just developmentally appropriate to, and some of them have, you know, a lot of our kids are on and off campus with CCP jobs, things like that, so giving them the chance to still have that communication during non-instructional times. And we can certainly revisit it, you know, if that's the board's pleasure now or down the road, but our initial sentiment was, as long as they have it away during the instructional block, we felt good about that.
It's unrealistic to enforce that with an open campus.
Yeah.
Since you're going outside.
It is one of the things we discussed as well, is...
Yeah, you couldn't enforce a complete ban if you're able to leave the building.
Yeah.
I mean, they have internships and jobs, and, you know, some kids are helping with childcare for their younger siblings, so they need to...
However, I do support complete ban during instructional time means complete ban during instructional time.
Yeah. And my point was is that there were recommendations at the annual conference that you have a complete ban from sixth grade all the way through 12th grade, but we have, that's why I asked that rhetorical question, was that we have special circumstances with the open school. We also have Mitchell close by. We have kids that are, you know, doing internships, that are working, that are getting ready to graduate, that have or need access to their phones, so I just wanted to make sure that that was...
And I think it's good for us to be able to look at it from a first line of defense with this policy, and then if we need to revisit it and come back to the drawing board, it's always good. Because, again, you don't want to put the staff in a tough situation of, you know, taking phones or just, you know, doing anything or just going back and forth with students, so, you know, it's always good for us to be able to revisit.
Well, they're still going to be in that position, because this is not going to work if they're not willing to enforce it. So, you know, there will be students who will try to access their phones during instructional time, and the staff is going to have to enforce that.
Yeah, and I think we, you can be creative with different opportunities. You know, I've seen some stuff where, you know, you have pockets, lockers, different things to wear when they walk in. It's just kind of one of those, you know, I look at it from a personality standpoint. You have to build a relationship with the student, and I think once you build a relationship, you know, and just set the standard, like you said, you know, from day one, it'll kind of help with the relationship and the opportunities.
There was a, one of the meetings I went to at the conference, and one teacher commented, "I like the kids not having their phones because I see their faces again."
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yep.
And the focus level. I mean, when you think about it, the focus level, one of the things that you see is if something happens in the classroom, the first thing you hear is phones come out and they're recording. So I think, you know, coming up with some kind of, you know, strategized opportunities where that can be taken at the beginning of class will help us with that as well. Thank you, though.
I'll have a recommendation by the staff to approve a cellphone policy in which K through 8 has a complete ban of electronic devices from the start to the end of the school day, and a grade 9 through 12, a complete ban of electronic devices to be banned during instructional time specifically, but would allow use between classes and during lunch for our specific needs here in our district. I will entertain a motion to approve said recommendation by the administrative staff.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the cellphone usage policy for 2026 through '07.
Starting January 1.
Starting January 1. Anyway, I did not put that in there. I will make sure that that's okay to put January 1. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I think this is a wonderful idea, and I look forward to seeing attention spans improve and faces seen. So that's good.
I just want to clarify very quickly on that date, because technically, it can be adopted now, and so I need to know what to tell NCSBA as far as publishing. So you're saying that you don't want it to go into effect until January 1?
I mean, I think, personally, I think we got to get the parents and students...
We have lots of cute graphics to put out between now and then.
Yeah, give them, give them fair warning. I think that would be fair. Fair enough, I think, you know?
Thank you.
If the board is good with it, I think it's...
So do we have a, wait a minute, what are we saying then by way of the date?
So I think from now until January 1, we start to just make parents aware. Yeah, make parents aware what we're going to do as of January 1, 2026, and then when we have that rollout, they can't say they haven't, you know, got notification.
So January 1.
Start the year fresh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. All right, next up, we have some budget amendments, as Ms. Davis referenced earlier, with Ms. Davis.
Hey, Mr. Whitfield, Dr. Gardner, members of the board. It's the most exciting part of the meeting, the budget amendments. So I'll just kind of go through those really quickly. In our Fund I, State Public School Fund, we have some developmental day money that we have received. Dr. Albert and her team have been busy writing grants and applying for funding, and so that is in there. We also received some money for CTE credentials. We had already received an initial allotment, so this is the remaining allotment for the rest of the year. We have early literacy funds, and then also our special state reserve, also with Dr. Albert and AC. In our capital outlay, which is our Fund IV from the county, we have a $1.2 million revision. Now, part of that is actually our carryover from last year, so that's about $675,000 of that, and then the other $617,000 is just a true-up that the county does every year once the actual receipts come in, and then they true-up with us and with our state's full as well. And then in our Fund VIII, our other local current expense, we have received our Year Two SRO funding. Typically, that was received in our State Public School Fund through the Department of Public Instruction. That is no longer under the Department of Public Instruction, it's actually under the State Bureau of Investigation now. So that's who the Center for Safer Schools is working with, so that's why it is now in our Fund VIII. And then we also received some funding from the Carolina Panthers Foundation for Flag Football Initiative. So if you have any questions, I will be more than happy to answer those. If not, these are just proposed amendments to be made for our budget resolution for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2026.
Is the true-up numbers, are those based on end of fiscal year, July 1st, this past year?
It would have been correct, July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. There is a, it's a lot, it's a huge process that those revenues come through the state and then flow back through the county, so it takes that long to actually true-up the sales tax and what we get for our capital funding, so.
And just for the general public, we still do not have a state budget. The funds that we are talking about are based on last year's funding numbers. So that's why we have some money to operate with, but we have yet to receive a state budget.
Correct, yes, we're still operating under like a continuing budget resolution, basically. Anything that was recurring, we received, anything that was non-recurring, we do not.
Okay, any other questions? If not, we have a recommendation to approve the budget amendments as presented. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendments as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Next up, we have a field trip opportunity that Mr. Riddick will share.
Chairman Whitfield, board members, Dr. Gardner. As Dr. Royal alluded to in his report, the Mooresville High School cheer team did qualify for the national competition, which will be held in Orlando, Florida from February 5th through February 9th. Approximately 25 students will attend this trip with a cost of $1,500 to $1,800 per student. The cheer team did have to earn this bid to enter this competition, and they will be fundraising to assist with the cost. But since this is an out-of-state and overnight field trip, it does require board approval, so we are asking you to approve this so the girls could attend this competition.
Okay, any questions? If not, we have a recommendation to approve an overnight outstate field trip outlined above, which is the High School Cheer National Competition in Orlando, Florida, from February 5th to February 9th, 2026, with approximately 25 students. Attend the trip at a cost of $1,500 to $1,800 per student. They have earned this bid and will assist in fundraising. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next up, we have the agenda item that we moved, the Shared Use Facility Agreement with the town of Mooresville, with Dr. Royal.
Good evening again, Mr. Whitfield, Dr. Gardner, members of the board. Tonight, I bring to you an MOU between... an MOU between Mooresville Greated School District and the Town of Mooresville. We have a long history of a partnership when it comes to facility use. Leadership from both organizations have worked over the last several months to update our agreement, ensuring that a strong and stable partnership continues. You've received a copy of the proposed MOU in your board packets. We are asking for approval for the MOU this evening. I will highlight, this involves mainly the Parks and Rec Department from the Town of Mooresville, as well as the Citizen Center, which, so for Mooresville Greated, we would benefit by the MOU of having a facility use agreement with the Charles Mack Citizen Center, Edgemore Park Tennis Courts for Mooresville High School, Mooresville Golf Club for our golf team, men's and women's golf team, Selma Burke Recreational Center, the multipurpose room, park picnic shelters for our community events. We would also have access to the mobile recreation unit and corresponding staff throughout the calendar year. And from the town's perspective, they would gain or continue to have access to our gymnasiums at Rocky River Elementary, Mooresville Intermediate, and East Mooresville Intermediate for their rec basketball program, as well as they would have access to the multipurpose fields at Mooresville Intermediate and Rocky River that we share for youth football and some other activities like lacrosse, as well as the use of Mooresville High School's football stadium with Mooresville Youth Athletics for their youth football in the fall and spring. So that's kind of an overview of the facilities that are in the agreement. And we would ask for approval this evening.
Any, any question? Okay, we have a recommendation to approve memorandum of understanding for shared use of facilities with the Town of Mooresville and the Department of Recreation, primarily for purposes of our partnership with them. I will entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve memorandum of understanding for shared use of facilities. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okey dokey. It now comes the time in the meeting that the board must enter closed session for purposes to discuss personnel and consult with the board attorney. I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
entertain a motion to approve the personnel report as recommended by the superintendent.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, wait a minute. Uh, all those opposed, motion carries. Uh, note for the business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?